Okay, I'm going to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Board of Education on February 24th, 2021 at Hubbell Middle School. Before we take the roll, as we have provided since July of last year, this board meeting is available for viewing via the live stream on the district's YouTube channel and also available for anyone to view at any time that may be more convenient. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Crabtree, here.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Mappuson absent, Mr. Paulson.
Here. Dr. Slaggy, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, united states, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, we are in a workshop setting. As I have prefaced in the past, this is a Committee of the Whole Meeting that allows the district administration to present on topics that are central to the instructional programs and overall operation of the school district. The focus of tonight's meeting will be on two important items. First, as a continuation of our Return to Learn work plan discussed in depth at our last few meetings, we will introduce plans to address the learning needs of students during the spring, summer, and fall. This will be introduced as our Learning Acceleration Plan. And next, we will discuss our Equity Work Plan that was approved by the board last fall. Finally, as is our standard practice during Committee of the Whole Meetings, we will have public comment at the end of tonight's agenda. Before I turn it over to Dr. Schuler, I'd just like to add that the board is thankful that every one of our District 200 schools is open and complying with the mitigation strategies established for a safe learning environment for students, teachers, and staff. Our layered mitigation strategies are consistent with CDC guidance and recently confirmed by the DuPage County Health Department. We've made a lot of progress in bringing more students into the school based on the parameters and strategies previously presented to us and agreed upon by the board. We continue to make progress on our overall Return to Learn Plan, which includes bringing the students back for, excuse me, for five days a week, in-person learning. We want to commend our administrators, both at the district level and the school level, for their efforts to work through the myriad details and complexities to make this possible. First off, so we have two agenda items, as I mentioned. First off, we have our Learning Acceleration Plan. This is, as I just mentioned, a topic that's a component of our Return to Learn Plan. I asked the board to let the team get through this topic and have our discussion around this, and then at the end, we can ask any broader questions surrounding the overall plan and any progress the last few weeks. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So as Mrs. Murphy is making her way up to the podium, she and her team are going to present just a few introductory comments to our Learning Acceleration Plan. So tonight, we are going to focus on an aspect of our reopening plan, and that being learning acceleration. As the board will recall from the timeline and the work plan presented and discussed at the last two meetings, all of our plans are anchored around the expectation that students will be back in our buildings full-time next school year. This is based on the full expectation, the physical distancing expectations will be adjusted by that point, based on a variety of factors, including community transmission data, vaccine distribution, and the ability to continue necessary mitigations with fidelity. Currently, we are still operating with a strict six-foot physical distancing mitigation as required by CDC and the DuPage County Health Department under current community levels. With that in place, we will continue to progress through the plan that we've laid out for the board. We brought additional students back, middle and high schools, based on a needs basis. At our high schools, all seniors that expressed interest in coming four days a week have been invited and are coming back to our buildings. As we move forward, we'll continue to identify students on a needs basis while moving our focus to the other classes at the high school through the interest survey. We'll continue to work through our high school classes and accommodate as many students as we can with the six-foot physical distancing and use additional rooms as overflow spaces. Additionally, this week, our class, or last week, the Class of 2021 Committee has continued to meet and plan in-person opportunities for our graduating class, including graduation, senior week, prom, and other senior celebrations. We do anticipate that our graduation ceremonies will take place on the scheduled date, which is May 29. We're planning a celebration, they'll use our football fields and an outside venue for that, but specific details about times, structure, and spectators will be released as we get closer to it. Our middle schools are already operating closer to their classroom capacity at six-foot distancing, given higher participation numbers, just as a reminder. For the board and the hybrid plan, almost 80% of our middle school students are attending in the hybrid model, and we will not be able to significantly increase those in-person days until that physical distancing standard is adjusted. Board members have in your green folders tonight two documents that I want to call your attention to that were recently released by CDC and affirmed by the DuPage County Health Departments. The updated guidance is significant as a result of a change that does create a path for future flexibility in the physical distancing standard. There's a chart on page two of the DuPage County document. This comes directly from the CDC guidance, and as I call the board's attention to that chart, what I do want to point out is that CDC has laid out this document to reflect four different levels of community transmission. There are two key metrics that they focus on as a part of that community transmission, one being test positivity and the other being cases per 100,000 over a seven-day period. And what you'll see reflected in that chart is actually some language that does show that as we arrive at moderate or low levels of transmission, there is some flexibility in the language around physical distancing. While at the substantial and the high levels, it still reflects strict adherence to the physical distancing, six-foot distancing. As you arrive at moderate and low levels of the document, the language shifts to physical distancing to the greatest extent possible. And so, again, I just point out that as we look forward, there is a path, right, that opens up that possibility as we arrive at that place. And again, just as point of reference to the board, we haven't reviewed those community metrics in a little while. I think as of today in our ZIP Code data, we were around 86 cases per 100,000 in that northwestern site. So it's coming down, right, and it's moving in a positive direction, but does need to come down a little bit more to access this. It is important, as I mentioned, to recognize that those transmission numbers do fluctuate, and as we've monitored and shared the numbers in previous board and community meetings, we stress the importance of trend data in making those decisions. And so, again, I think that's a conversation we'll look at. When this information was released by CDC and DuPage County Health Department, I did receive several inquiries from board members requesting that we have a plan responsive to that new information. And as we plan our agenda for March the 10th and continue to closely monitor the community numbers, I do want to affirm the desire of our board to review a plan that's responsive to that information. So that's something we can talk about right at the end of our discussion tonight on learning acceleration, but our plan would focus on what and how we can make adjustments with and when, with the when being determined by our ability to move into appropriate levels within that CDC framework. So we can come back to this a little bit later. With that focus for our March 10th meeting, though, again, as we plan forward, we're going to spend time tonight really talking about learning acceleration. How are we addressing and how will we continue to address needs of our students as we move forward? We want to keep the conversation there tonight and plan the conversation forward around what potential plans could look like as we navigate through levels of the CDC framework. So with that said, Melissa's up at the podium, and I'm going to turn it over to her to walk you through the work that she and her teams have been doing.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present our Learning Acceleration Priorities and Plans. I do have several members of my team here tonight that will be joining in the presentation and also available to answering questions. We have Mrs. Ekstrom, our Executive Director for Special Education. We have Dr. Pueyo, our Director for English Learners and Equity, and we have Dr. Ozmkowski, our Director for School Improvement. I'm going to start with a statement that we put together. So the COVID-19 pandemic has required our entire community to collaboratively problem-solve on how to best support students during this unprecedented time. Our staff has done heroic work while navigating multiple challenges and changes. Now our focus is on continuing to move forward and planning for the future. This work requires putting structures in place that support recovery and long-term rebuilding to advance District 200. And that's exactly where our focus is tonight. We're talking about those supports that we're putting in place and how we're continuing to advance our district. We included this quote that came from a parent in our district, but also a member of our Citizens Advisory Committee. This parent actually made this comment with regards to this exact conversation around learning acceleration last week when we held our meeting. And here she said, I'm going to read it to you. "When we begin the conversation about recovering lost learning, parents know how hard teachers have worked this past year. The need to recover any learning loss is not because the teachers did not work or try hard enough. And for any of our staff members that are listening tonight, I do want them to know that we certainly recognize the exceptional hard work that they have put into this school year and all of the changes that they've had to endure. I had the opportunity this week to visit our middle schools, stop into classrooms, see children learning, and talk to our teachers, and it is obvious they have poured their heart into the work that they've done this year." So tonight, we have three guiding questions to frame our conversation. First, what are the priorities to consider in accelerating student learning? Second, how will we identify students in need of additional support? And third, what are our plans to accelerate student learning for the remainder of this year, this summer, and next year? So we'll start with that first question about the key priorities. So we recognize that COVID-19 has impacted all students in different ways. Our district is taking a comprehensive approach to analyzing all students' needs and determining the programming we need to accelerate learning. This approach includes analyzing multiple data sources and engaging our community to determine the current state of student learning and the impact on an altered school year. We recognize that a one-size-fits-all approach cannot meet all students' needs. Therefore, we've identified six key priorities to focus our planning and advance student learning. So our team has reviewed multiple resource and research around this topic of learning recovery or learning loss. And after that thorough research study, we have narrowed in on these six key priorities to focus all of our planning efforts and work. And so we're going to dive into each one of these deeper as into the next slide set. So the very first one that we have prioritized intentionally is around the whole-child approach. We know that school is more than merely teaching academic standards, and it needs to consider the needs of the whole child. And to address the loss that may have occurred due to the pandemic, it's very critical that we understand the needs and challenges of all of our students and what they may be facing and address their wellness and mental health needs. Second key priority, meeting the needs of all students. We recognize this has been an altered year that has impacted our students, but our, and our learning environments have varied. We've had our elementary students who have attended in-person learning for the entire year. We've had a hybrid environment. We've had an entirely virtual environment. But no matter the environment, every student needs to have opportunities to continue high-quality learning that includes differentiation and individualization. And just a review on what those two terms mean. So differentiation and individualization is really the strategies that teachers employ to allow students all to enter into learning, no matter their level. And so when you're planning differentiation, that's for a group of students that may have similar needs. When you're doing individualization, you're applying those strategies for an individual Next, start with those most vulnerable. COVID-19 has amplified educational inequities and impacted our most vulnerable students. Numerous studies have revealed the pandemic has hardest-hit younger, lower-income students, multilingual learners, and those that have been disconnected from school. Next, ensuring attendance and engagement. We know regular attendance is essential to high levels of learning. Our current learning environment, specifically when we have been remote or hybrid, has changed the landscape of attendance and engagement, and some of our students need targeted support in this area to thrive. You may remember a conversation that we had many months ago when we noticed this situation where we had cameras off and voices off. Well, that was something we had to intervene with right away because we certainly had some concerns around the engagement piece. Next, using assessment to prioritize learning, specifically talking about assessment in that space where what we call formative assessment. And that is something that is essential to responsive teaching. So we call formative assessment, those checkpoints teachers use along the way, to ensure students are learning. So this can be as simple as observing your students, listening in with intent, and asking purposeful questions. It is a critical component to lesson design and to accelerate student learning with just what they need. And our last priority, this is called accelerate or integrate but don't remediate. All students must have the opportunity to learn at a high level, and therefore, grade-level content and instructional rigor are our academic priority. Rather than focus on remediation, our focus is on acceleration and a commitment to grade-level teaching. To accelerate learning, though, our teachers will need to be intentional in how they integrate content from a previous grade level and provide scaffolds and supports to determine how students enter that content. And so when we use that term scaffold, what that means are those supports that a teacher puts in place so students can be successful. So an example of this could be, every one of our math classrooms use word problems nearly every single day. So suppose a fifth-grade classroom with a student that may not have fifth-grade reading abilities, but their math is right there. That word problem may present challenges to them, but we don't want to stop them and give them something not at a grade level. We would maybe put some pictures or adjust the language to allow them to enter that task. So that's what we mean when we say scaffolds. So now that we've moved through those key priorities, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Ozmkowski to walk us through the next set of information around the guiding question, how are we going to identify our students in need of additional supports?
The goals, the student learning goals of Vision 2022 have remained in our minds as we've continued to respond to the changes in the environment, and they will guide us as we accelerate District 200 into the future. At each level, we've identified the data points behind each of these metrics, and we're creating multi-data tools that will allow users to analyze the data in relationship to each other. And part of this design process for the tool was to collaborate with school-level staff to identify which data points are most important. At the elementary level, the metrics from Vision 2022 that pertain to learning acceleration are reading, math, and student engagement as measured by attendance. On the subject of engagement, disengaged virtual academy students continue to be a primary focus at the elementary level. However, we will provide additional programming for targeted in-person elementary students as well. The data points identified by the teams include attendance, any change in district assessment scores over time, teacher recommendation, and for our multilingual learners, a test called ACCESS that assesses students speaking, listening, reading, and writing each year on a growth basis. At the middle school level, they are also pursuing English Language Arts and Math, and you may wonder why the Advanced Placement and Dual Credit metric is placed in middle school when those courses are not taught at that level. As we go through our database processes every year, we always check for delta or change, and this year, that's been a particularly critical step. As we are identifying freshman course selection for our current eighth graders, we noticed that the group targeted for A-level classes was smaller and less diverse than typical. So instead of simply letting that happen, our schools were strongly committed to diversity and robustness at advanced level, and they adjusted the criteria and designed a summer learning opportunity to help bridge those students into their advanced class. learning opportunity to help bridge those students into their advanced classes so that we can maintain the robustness and diversity in those courses. That kind of work and lens will be applied throughout the middle school data as we look at attendance, trends in district assessment scores, and teacher recommendation, just as we have at elementary. And at middle school, we'll also take a close look at grades and particularly any changes in grades because they're a predictor of another secondary goal, which is high school graduation rate. So at the high school level, graduation rate becomes an official metric, and its strongest predictor is the freshman-on-track metric. So those two will be a strong focus of this work at the high school level, as will continuing the robustness of our advanced and dual credit program and the diversity. The data points for high school include attendance, any change in course registration, students dropping to, say, a less rigorous course, how we can prevent that, any changes in grades, credits towards graduation or grade point average. And again, that teacher recommendation piece is always a part of everything we do and a critical data point. And for specialized populations, such as students with an IEP or a 504 plan or multilingual learners, we require specialized data. We'll look at FASTBRIDGE data. That's a test, that's an adaptive test that measures students' exact levels on different components of math and reading. The data from their IEP goals, any social-emotional referral data, including risk of harm data, and also team recommendations are a critical piece of that for this population as well. If you have specific questions about these assessments, Mrs. Ekstrom is an expert, and she would be happy to answer your questions. And a key partner, parents and caregivers have always been our partners, but this year in particular, they have really partnered with us significantly on all of our learning plans. And as a critical partner, it's essential we gather broad feedback from them to support our efforts as we plan for the future. So we're going to use our thought exchange tool and ask stakeholders two key questions. What are the positive outcomes this year for our students so that we can continue that positive momentum? And what are the needs that we see? And that information will be used to help us determine the positive things we need to continue and our most significant opportunities and challenges.
Thank you, Dr. Ozmakowski. Okay, moving into our last guiding question, so what are our plans to accelerate student learning for the remainder of this year, this summer, and next year? So we have organized this into three phases. And so Phase 1 is what we're doing from now until the end of the school year. And so I'm going back to those key priorities that I walked you through at the beginning of the presentation, and I actually created a handout for you. It's in your green folders that just lays out those six priorities and descriptions as well. And you're going to see in the next three slides what we're doing right now, and you're going to also see how those are all very connected to each of those priorities. So we do have a metric on our dashboard, as Dr. Ozmakowski spoke to, that monitors attendance. And so we do have three items right here, I'm going to walk you through, that are addressing the challenges that we're facing this year. First and foremost, our schools have identified all of the students that are disengaged, chronically absent, or unconnected. We've put targeted interventions in place. I know we've spoke at the last board meeting, but worth noting once again that each one of our elementary buildings have put together a very specific plan around how their homeschool will work with disengaged virtual academy students. At the middle school level, we've actually created a continuum of interventions to address chronically absent students in a strategic manner based on different reasons that they may be missing school. And lastly, expanding time. So at our secondary level, as Dr. Schuler spoke to at the beginning of the meeting, we have been expanding the number of students that are attending four or five days a week, and that is based on some students that are having difficulty attending in that online Second, our dashboard component around reading and math. We are putting some additional interventions in place. So starting second semester, we had an increase in enrollment in our virtual academy at the middle school level, and therefore, we are looking to expand the number of sections of reading lab and math lab to meet those students' needs. And also, we're continuing to provide personalized support for those students enrolled in our day academy at the middle school. And just a reminder for the board, I know we spoke about this a few months ago, but a reminder for that. So the day academy at our middle school is modeled after our high school program, which our high school program is a credit recovery program. But here at the middle school, we took that idea as well. So we have some students in the middle school virtual academy that have had difficulty attending regularly to all of their classes, and they were getting into difficulty with their learning. And so we've made a pivot. We've enrolled them in edgenuity courses, and they have a teacher that works with them personally, supporting and coaching them through those courses. And so that's another intervention we've put into place this year. And lastly, diagnose and identify learning needs. So we have our reading and math assessments that are going to allow us to identify those students that need more, specifically in the summer, and also help us identify what those skill gaps are. We are continuing to use the enhanced problem-solving process that Dr. Ozmakowski developed this year that is in place at our middle schools, but also it is in place at our high schools as well. Speaking of our high schools, the two metrics on our dashboard that are guiding our programming right now and for the remainder of the year are around freshman-on-track and our graduation rate. And so both Wheaton-Mooreville South and Wheaton-North have plans to support not just our hybrid students, but our students who are learning virtually, who need some extra support. So that programming can include Support Saturdays, Spring Break Term, Evening Sessions. You may remember that we had Winter Break Term where some of our students made up some of their learning and, you know, got some help with their grades over winter break. And we'll continue to utilize that enhanced problem-solving process there at the high school. Phase 2 is our summer planning. Again, the programming all centers around those six priorities. Okay, reading and math. We recognize that we want to have students to continue learning over the summer, and so we want to develop opportunities for all of our students to continue to work on reading and math skills over the summer months. We also will be putting together intensive tutoring. This is one of the most effective ways to help accelerate student learning. And so this model would be in place for students in grades, you know, one through seven, where they would get specific help from teachers in either reading or math in the areas of support that they need. Next, Acceleration Academy. This is more going back to the idea of summer school, where we would have small groups of students being taught at their home building by teachers, maybe even potentially could be their teacher for next year, and they would be receiving supports in reading and math to help prepare them for the next school year. But we're also really taking that whole-child approach we talked about and looking to our virtual academy students and helping to welcome them back into the school before the school year starts so that we can rebuild those relationships with them. And lastly, Dr. Pueyo and Mrs. Ekstrom and team are putting together specialized programming for our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners to address the most pressing skill gaps. We've always had programs for those groups over the summer, but those are going to be more expanded this summer. At the high school level, once again, that focus on freshman-on-track and graduation rate, and we have three plans in place. Two are ones that we have continuously offered, but one is new. So online summer school, that was what we used to have, we called ELO. We referred to as ELO last summer, you'll remember, was our first year of doing online summer school that we designed. So we're going to continue to offer online summer school. That's an opportunity for all students. The other familiar program to you is at the bottom there, the Freshman Support Bridge. So our freshman bridge courses we'll continue to offer. But what's new is in the middle, and this is that same idea as the Winter Break Term, the Spring Break Term, now we're having Summer Break Term, where we're really looking at students who, you know, almost need some credit recovery to earn a passing grade. And so they're really specifically looking at what portions of that course do they need to make up and really making an individualized plan for the student and working with teacher to help get them there so that they can earn the credit for the course. And then lastly, around our summer programming at the high school level, we're once again, of course, focusing on our AP programming or dual-credit courses. So here, you're going to see the program that Dr. Ozmakowski spoke to, where we're really designing that freshman bridge course for our students that we know can be successful in A-level courses and just provide that bridge opportunity to provide them some additional support. And we're going to continue to offer our AP Aspirally Excellence Program that we have had much success with over the last few years. Phase 3 is looking ahead to next year. And so at this point in time, what we've put together is really a framework for action, and it comprises four different steps. And so on this next slide, I'm going to walk you through what those four steps mean. So first, we've done this, we have formed a core learning recovery planning team, and that team is made up of leaders, K-12. And so we are having, you know, common conversations about the approach that we're going to take next year. So that's that vertical articulation that we're having across all of our levels. And so that group will be working on specific plans with their teaching groups at their levels around what that learning acceleration plan is and really working on precisely how do we intervene with potential gaps with just-in-time learning. And of course, this kind of work involves professional learning, and so that's part of our plan we've outlined here, too, where we've said we're going to train our teachers and leaders on best practices in this area. And lastly, the best plans have, you know, a step in there where you're continuously monitoring your effectiveness. So we can use our data to continue to determine the effectiveness of our plans and adjust the supports along the way that our leaders and teachers may need. And I have reached the end, and we can, my team and myself can take questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Just amazed at the complexity and challenges that go into all this. I guess I'm going to try to turn it over to Chris, since you're the true educator in this. You always ask the best questions in this.
It was extremely well laid out and well-thought-out, and I greatly appreciate, you know, all the effort and that that went into this. So there's a lot of things that we normally don't do, which I think are great in being able to individualize and accelerate the learning process for our students. So, you know, it's not even, I know we have money that we've received from the federal. My bigger concern is, do we feel like we have staffing available? Because this is way more than we would normally need staff to work during the summer months, or are we going to need to look outside of the district to be able to handle some of this as well? That'd be my first place I'd start.
Well, we're certainly hoping that we're going to be able to fill all these places with our staff. I know that our building-level principals have started the conversations with their staff, and they have interested folks, but, you know, of course, that is an option if that needs to be. But we are starting with our building level and hoping that all of our, you know, as many teachers that are available and interested are going to be on board.
And then when do we anticipate being able to let families know what that might look like for scheduling purposes? I would see that that could be a roadblock that, you know, could be there. So I guess giving them the biggest opportunity to be able to figure that out.
Right. So our plan is right now is in the month of March, we're working through all of that data and identifying those students, and then working on the communication after that. But I agree with you, it's important we get out the information to our families as soon as possible.
I love the thought exchange idea where we're going to be, you know, asking the community for some feedback. And, you know, I understand that that's more broad feedback, but if we thought it all about, you know, especially our virtual academy students where we really haven't had that interaction, in-person interaction, and the family has really been a key player here, how they can give more specific feedback in case, you know, we might not be picking up on something that might be happening at home with the learning process? Is there a way that we can capture some of that?
Yes. I think the short answer to it is certainly yes. I do think that both Mrs. Moran and Mr. Smith have state-connected to their staff and, you know, with the families, but I think that certainly is a fair question to look at how we can get some structured feedback. And I will mention that those two thought exchange questions launched last night. So with the parent session we did with Dr. Bolden last night, we had about 250 families that joined us for the parent session last night. And as a part of that session, we launched those two thought exchange pieces. So we worked with CAC last week to kind of refine the questions and use their input to develop the initial thought exchange. They engaged in it. We launched it officially last night as a part of that parent engagement session and our meeting Friday with the Community Engagement Committee, Board Committee, to really look at and brainstorm kind of all of the opportunities to push that question, that set of questions out as broadly as possible. And just by way of a reminder, that's the nice thing about a thought exchange is it is a running dialogue, right? So it is not like a question that requires you to, like, capture feedback from a group and then assimilate it with other feedback. It is just a running dialogue that takes new input, allows people to rate thoughts, give feedback on other thoughts, and then there's some analytics that sit behind it that kind of help, you know, certain themes rise to the top to really give us a sense of what it is that we're hearing in both of those. So again, those questions are out. Community Engagement Committee is going to help us with brainstorming what are, beyond our parents, and obviously the groups that we know we're connected to, what are some of the other community resources and groups that we want to reach out to directly.
Then my last question is more in regards to our assessments and our district assessments, and how is that playing a part with our virtual academy students so that we can have a true kind of idea of where they are?
We have retooled the way we deliver district assessments at Virtual Academy. The camera-on rule is part of it. And if we do occasionally see a parent that is assisting, you know, we have a way of undoing that score and having the student retake it. They're also giving them in smaller groups. And then if there is a student where we can't, you know, because of parental issues, you know, we have notes on those students so we know who they are for the fall when they reenter our buildings as well, so we know that they'll need to be assessed straight away. But they do keep track. The teachers let me know if there was a parent feeding answers to a child or something like that, or a child was distracted playing with their dog, and we can undo the score and have them retake it.
Because we are not doing any form of formal state assessment, correct, right now?
The federal government just this week said we are still doing state assessments. So the state of Illinois submitted feedback to the new Department of Education, but I think just as of recently, most recent confirmation is there will be some type of state assessment still in the spring.
And then kind of pigging back on assessment, what about for some of our special populations in terms of even just getting those benchmarking opportunities for IEPs?
So yes, FASTBRIDGE is our adaptive assessment that Dr. Ozmakowski had referenced. It is an adaptive assessment that was already in an online computer-based format. So we've been able to continue with that and continue with our benchmarking and progress monitoring of our students, whether they have been in person or in a remote setting.
Thank you.
Dave, any questions or comments? One question I have is just...
One question I have is just about the assessments and about, you know, kids that are doing okay, but we don't, through the filtering, are we doing, we don't identify them for extra summer work? Or is there opportunities for them if they, with their parents, identify a need? Probably know more about the summer school, but you understand they're asking them?
Yes. So in the K-8 space, that's where we're really looking to plan those, that first item, I believe that was on the slide, the continued learning and reading and math space. At our high school, we do have some online courses that would be available, but absolutely, I think, always reaching out to teachers to have conversations about what other needs students have is a good first step.
Talking about the parents reaching out to teachers.
Correct. Parents reaching out to teachers about what else students may need.
Hey, Dave. Can you move the microphone closer?
All right. And then this question might be hard to answer, but any feel for what percentage of students we expect to participate in some of the summer learning?
Yeah, that is a, that is a good question.
Yeah. And I don't mean to put you on the, I was just curious.
Yeah. I mean, we know what percent of our students have participated in the programs that we have offered in the past, and we would hope to continue to get that same level of engagement for those programs. In terms of the programs that are new to us, yeah, we're going to, we're going to see what that's going to be, right?
Yeah, well, it'd be interesting, it'd be interesting to look at that just to see, you know, has there really been a degradation or not? You know, there's a lot of talk about that.
And I'll also add, because we're going to be offering those programs at their home schools, there's going to, we felt like there would be more interest if it was offered there instead of some central sites.
And one thing I guess want to add to it, so remember in each of the learning opportunities, all the learning opportunities start with a specific dive into what are the data elements that identify the students that we have? So to answer your question, I think it should be 100%, right? 100% of the students we identify with a need, we want matched with the program and opportunity. How many students specifically will ultimately be identified as having a need? I think that's what's a little bit tough to predict at this point. But again, even going back to the end of the, at the end, the middle of the first semester, Dr. Ozenkowski and our teams at each of our secondary buildings have been doing deep dives into grades and performance and supporting students in addressing and remediating gaps all along. So again, I would answer your question specifically by saying, our goal is 100%. 100% of the students we identify as having a need, we want matched to the right intervention that will support and address that need over the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
My first question is about your whole-child approach. And all these things sound great, but I tend to look at them and try to understand what does that look like in practice? So when you're talking about identifying children who have been missing something in that whole-child environment, including the social-emotional piece and everything, how do you assess that? And then what are we offering anybody?
I see Dr. Salagi turning on his microphone. Speak to that.
Yeah, I think you're looking at it from both ways. So without making assumptions, the first piece is that if we have a lack of engagement through attendance or engagement, or if we have some academic concerns, that could be attributed to a social and emotional need or a lack of connection. So that's one way of looking at it, has if you identify a student through that criteria and you set up an opportunity for them, there's probably a strong chance that they're going to need connection to thrive because learning's a social experience, right? So typically, you see a strong correlation there to begin with. And while it's not involved in our criteria, I think that's just one piece that stands out right away to me. I think the other piece that we can take into consideration, too, is the teacher feedback piece of it, right? When we think about the needs of the whole student, I think that that's the piece where our teachers know their kids well. They know who's connected and who's not. They know who they're struggling to connect with. They know what a child's maybe struggling with at home. And the fact that that's been put into the criteria, I think, gives that piece that you can't put a number on, but that we've got to trust as well. So I think having both of those pieces are things that I would point to. Melissa or Erica or anybody else, I'll let speak in as well. But that's how I would see both of those pieces.
Yeah, to piggyback off what Dr. Salagi was saying, we have been working with Dr. Salagi and his team to make sure that we created a structured social-emotional referral system. So if a classroom teacher, whether in Virtual Academy or in person, starts to notice a change in behavior or hears something from a parent or notices a change in behavior in a student, they can make a referral to one of our related service providers who will meet with the student, start to do some screenings, start to work proactively on the front end right now. And then as we're working with the student now, if we start to feel some more intensive supports are needed, we'll start working on that. But that might also be a good indicator that we need to get the student in some of these specialized supports and programs.
Question, follow-up on that. Have we been doing anything in a structured way like that in the past, or is this all brand-new this year?
No. A lot of the infrastructure that we've used this year, we've just built on systems that we have had in place, and then we've carried them over into our Virtual Academy session.
Okay. Great. I think I got a piece of an answer from Dr. Schuler on this. But these learning opportunities for over the summer, are we talking about in-person at our schools?
Yes. In-person is our plan.
Okay. Very good.
If we need to, if we need to offer virtual options, that is certainly something we can consider. But we're hoping to get as many students in-person as possible to have the right intervention. But we can consider virtual if it's needed. I know in the high school plan for the spring, that is definitely part of their plan is to offer both.
Okay. And beyond zeroing in on kids that we know or we sense have a deficit or have been struggling, kind of following on something Dave said, is there a way to provide for parents something in the way of enrichment, just in general? I feel like we are hearing a lot from parents, things that might not show up on grade reports. I mean, I've heard parents say, my kid's grades are fine, but I'm not even sure that I believe that the grades this year are comparable to grades in past years. If there are parents that just feel like, I'm not sure or I'm concerned that maybe we have not achieved as much this school year as we might have been in a normal situation, are there enrichment materials that we can have on hand and we can pick and choose? I think my child could use a little bit more in math. Somebody else might feel like their child could use a little bit more reading or language arts support so that they have something available to them.
I like what you brought up, and I want to bring that to the teams that are going to be working on putting those plans together this summer and put that as part of our conversations that we have. I know a conversation we had today in my department meeting was about how can we address some of those, you know, standards that maybe we felt like we didn't spend as much time on? We know we touched on them, but maybe we didn't spend the same amount of time we've spent in the past, and that might fold into what you're talking about. So I like your idea. I'm going to take it down and bring it to our planning conversations.
Okay. And just thinking on my feet here, one thought I have is, I know that there are learning standards. Where's my mic? Written for the educational community, but is there a way to put together a layman's terms learning standard so for all the parents out there thinking, you know, we can't possibly have achieved everything, to be able to give parents a sense of the framework of this is what your child should have expected to achieve in third grade this year, and so that they can look at it and either reassure themselves or see which piece that they feel like they'd like to do something with over the course of the summer?
I like that idea as well. I'm going to put that down.
Wouldn't that be on the report card, though? Because you have a standards-based report card at the elementary level. So, I mean, I think the standards-based report card, right, that gets reported out would reflect the key elements that students should learn. So I think certainly at the elementary level, that's where the opportunity would sit. Secondary level, I think that probably would have to involve a little more teacher input to look into that.
Gotcha. And it's, I have not looked carefully at our report cards recently to know whether reading a report card would mean anything to me, or your average parent, or whether we need anything that's just a little bit more user-friendly.
Yeah. Jen, I think it's a fair question, but I guess I would say I would hope so because of the purpose of a report card is to communicate to a parent the progress a child has made. So if that language is not understandable to parents, that's probably a broader report card issue. So I would hope so, right? I would hope that it's, you know, would be clear where there are potentially concern areas.
First, thank you very much. I agree with Chris. Can you hear me? There we go. That, sorry, that it was laid out very well, and I appreciate that.
Susan.
Is it not working?
Just talk right into it.
Is that better? Is this on? I feel like...
It's on.
Okay. I know.
It's just not getting you.
There we go. Okay. So some of the questions I had were addressed already. One thing I had, I read an article sometime in the past week. I don't know what the problem is.
It is working online, not outgoing to the room, so you know.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll talk loud. Oh, that's better. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Sorry. Are we, so based on an article I read, are we engaging, and I know we have the thought exchange, and I don't know, is that for just parents or is that for students, too?
We were actually going to include staff in that conversation.
Okay. I guess my thought was, this article was talking about that they put together student-focused groups, asking what the students felt that they needed, what they, what they felt that they needed in the school year, what worked well for them, what didn't work well for them, what did learning loss mean to students? Because it didn't necessarily mean the same thing to students. This is what the article is about, that it didn't necessarily mean the same thing to students that it did to teachers. And so I'm just wondering if there is a way for us to engage students in focused groups at all levels to get their feedback on, as we move forward with our plans and what we're developing, that there is absolutely a student voice in there? Because I think, just in general, I think we've seen in various surveys, like even, you know, pre-pandemic, that students and parents don't necessarily think the same way. I know as a parent myself, sometimes like, well, this would be great for my student. And I'll ask my student about it, and he's like, hmm, that's not really, you know, that's not the most important thing to me. And I think that's really important to understand, is the student perspective of this as we move through our plans, that we make sure to incorporate their feedback and their voice. And, you know, and maybe we can do that on various in-person days, if we can make that work with distancing and space and, but, you know, if we need to do it virtually, we need to do it virtually. But I just, I just was, I just think it's always so important to get the student voice in this because I think there's sometimes a disconnect between parent and student. And so...
I read that Ed Week article, too. I thought it was insightful, the things that the students said, so...
Yeah. No, it was really interesting because I think there were some things that I think we, as parents, think like, oh, my gosh, this is so awful. And they're like, no, it's really okay. And like, I'm, you know, and these are the things that I'm more concerned about. I just think it was, it was very enlightening for me. And then I think, Jen, I kind of touched on this with the intervention programs with the summer term and the Saturdays and the evenings. Do we need to provide transportation for kids during those times? Or do they have to get themselves to those programs?
We have provided transportation for those programs.
Okay. Yeah, I just was thinking about that, you know, just as far as, I wouldn't want that to be a barrier for them to receive those services, that they can come here and do what they need to do. And, you know, and I, and this might be out of our realm, but I think what the percentage are of kids who need these services that, you know, I'm sure, you know, that there's kids I'm sure who need to work and need family obligations, that their, you know, their education is very important. But, you know, just kind of helping, working with around, yeah, I think there's families who have more struggles right now than in kind of more pre-pandemic times, and that we can work with those students around those hurdles. You know, again, just trying everything we can to accommodate difficulties families are having right now.
I would like to comment on that. Speaking on behalf of our high schools, that was certainly in their mind and why you saw those different options where it said the Saturdays and the evening in the spring term because they've talked about how their students are involved in different things and even to the point where they're involved in athletics. But they want, they know they need some opportunities in the learning space, too. So that's why they had that, those different choices for the reasons you spoke to.
Yeah. Okay. And that's kind of what I got from that, seeing those different options, and I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. I think that was pretty much it. But again, thank you for the work and, you know, it was very clearly laid out. And I think we're really, you know, hitting all the different touchpoints that we need to be hitting with these, with this plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I switched mics on Susan before the meeting started. There you go. I love this topic. One is, I think the shift from terminology is important because words matter, from learning loss to acceleration, it's more holistic, it focuses on the whole student, and it's positive momentum. So I love that, the way we're framing it. It's, I think that's critical. The opening statement by Dr. Schuler was important to me. We've had a plan. We've had a plan all along. We continue to adjust that plan based on guidance we get and based on feedback from the various participants in the plan. And I just think that's a really important thing to remember, that there's been a ton of hard work, which Dr. Murphy outlined, not only by our teachers, but by our staff and others, to continue to develop this plan from day one and to continue to adjust it and make it better based on feedback. So I really, I really appreciate those opening comments and the way we kicked off this topic. I have a delicate, and I'm not going to say it very well, point, but these needs, these challenges that our students face are critical and important. And we're giving an opportunity to, to address those needs. But that opportunity is only good if it's taken, right? And so there's, as you introduced the topic, many of our populations, student populations, don't necessarily have the supports in place and the encouragement in place to embrace the opportunity. And we may need to have a more specific dialogue with students on choices and outcomes, what it means to participate or not participate. And I'll just kind of leave it at that. I think that's an important point, though, so we don't have multi-year challenges. You know, I think, and that's really the challenge, I see. And lastly, I think this is a very complex topic with a very complex plan, comprehensive and complex plan, with a lot of moving parts, which is so critical because, as you said, not every student's the same, not every plan's the same. It may be an opportunity for us to communicate... to communicate in a little bit more depth, and maybe a little bit more non-traditional approach than just the newsletter. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think this might be an opportunity where it needs a little deeper communication plan, because of, because of its complexity and its comprehensiveness. But I, I just think it's a fantastic topic. Great job to everybody. I really appreciate the work, and I'm sure our public does, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob. Thank you. Just kind of one, I guess, comment or observation, and then a, an idea. So I think, just to echo Rob's statements, you know, it's easy to kind of look at this and think of loss and recovery. I was in my, and I love the term, the rephrasing of it, for acceleration of learning. But I was in my teacher group meeting just the other week, and I was listening to a, a virtual academy elementary teacher talk about how, you know, we know there's going to be standards, mastery, kind of make up time to get, to get to where we should be, or where we were in previous years. But she really reinforced that these students are learning so many different life experiences right now. And it was a little similar to what Dr. Bolton talked about last night, that, and she, she talked about all the things that she is seeing in her students beyond the academic side of it, and, you know, the, the life skills such as perseverance and grit, the importance of looking after other students, you know, the whole independence and problem-solving, that they have to grow on their own a little bit more than they've used to. Technology skills have certainly blossomed, and they've developed a little bit more ownership in their own learning, which is a, a great fundamental thing that I think, you know, we, we all need that, all need to do. And I think it's, it's a great shift a little bit this year. So, you know, I think while this whole plan, which is, I think is fantastic, we also need to remember that there's a lot of great things that we've been able to uncover this year, and to the extent that we can, you know, remind our students, remind our teachers, remind our parents, that there's a lot of great things that have come out, positive, that we can carry forward beyond the academic. We can make up the academic, you know, we can go through, that's what this process is all about. But there's, there's stuff we should celebrate. And to the, maybe, you know, maybe we have to ask the students what they, what they maybe learned about this experience. So I just wanted to share that, that one of our, one of our teachers shared that with us. And then, and then the other kind of observation is, you know, to me, this, this plan feels very academic-oriented or academic-driven, around classes. And we, we've heard a lot about students who, on the emotional wellness side, have, have missed something. And we've had some students who haven't been in school by the time they get to next August, or this August, so it could be 18 months since they've been in school, and they miss those connections, they miss that structure. Is there something we can do this summer, kind of more on the emotional wellness side, to create programs for kids to reconnect with each other, to get, to remember what school looks like, to maybe even engage some of these local partners to help, help our students and groups, and kind of re-acclimate to, to life as a student in person?
Yes. So, two things, that the, even a couple weeks ago, that, that is part of our strategy for our virtual academy students, for sure, is to look at how do we reconnect just to the school experience. I think you're even speaking even broader than that. What are some of the other things we can do? So certainly, that's on our radar, even in the immediate, but as we look, look at different school, just, just the reconnection to an adult, yeah, we're exploring that, certainly.
Is that maybe something we would consider as a targeted thing this summer, as opposed to, or maybe in addition to what the beginning of the school year looks like?
Yeah, we, we've thrown around both. We've thrown around, actually, what can we do this spring? At least at the elementary level, we've talked about that, this spring in the afternoons, to get kids comfortable. Certainly, you saw some of the criteria there that I think will identify some of those students. But even expanding it further than that, certainly is something that, that we can consider. I, I appreciate that, yes.
All right. Any other questions specific to the learning acceleration plan, or comments? All right, so I want to kind of go back to Dr. Schuler's opening comments. So, you know, as, as I mentioned, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, this is really part of a broader, a broader, you know, set of issues we're dealing with, the return to learn plan, this is one of the key components to it. I think Dr. Schuler, you know, kind of threw out a request from us, you know, as we look at the metrics, I know some board members have, have shared some, some questions to me about what the, what the future planning looks like. Susan, you want to kind of share some of your thinking and observations, that we can kind of dig into this a little bit deeper?
Yeah, I think just overall, that, you know, we've seen the number, I think I told you last time, I keep my little list at the back of my notebook of it, week-by-week numbers, and we've seen our, our positivity rate is really low, and our, and our cases per hundred thousand are dropping. I think there was a little bit of an uptick today, but, but they have been dropping quite a bit. And per the, the new CDC guidelines, and now thankfully DuPage County has adopted those, too, that when, if we get, if our positivity stays low, and we get below 50 cases per hundred thousand, that, what is, what does that plan look like when we get to that point? And realizing that, just like, as when, when numbers were rising in November, that we, we, as you, as Dr. Schuler, you mentioned, that we look at trend data. So it's not like the first day that that ticks down below 50, we're like, and go, you know, it, we have to make sure it's sustained. And because we obviously don't want to be hopping between different things. But, you know, the numbers are falling, and when we do get to that point, my, my hope is that we're ready to go, and we have that plan in place. And, and what does that look like? I feel like we're appro, you know, that time may be coming, just with the numbers that keep falling, and the trends that are happening. And so I just, I think it's something that, you know, I would like to be prepared for, and, you know, as we always have been through this pandemic.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I know that we're all watching the numbers anxiously and thinking about, you know, what, what the future looks like, knowing, knowing that is part of our plan. You know, there's a commitment to have kids in school five days a week, you know, in the traditional model, as part, as part of this plan. Certainly it's being, beginning next school year, but if there's a path forward, you know, based on these new metrics and, and updated guidance, that we certainly love to know what that, what that plan is. How do other board members feel about that, and some of the comments Dr. Schuler made earlier?
Absolutely. I think the sooner the better, that we can start having our, our students have an idea of what the balance of the year is going to look like, our parents, our staff as well, so that they can. I, you know, I think that, you know, I'd love to see, when we come back at our March meeting, that we have something that is a, a plan, that, you know, if we go down into the moderate transmission level, you know, and we drop down from, say, the six feet to, you know, something else that's a little bit lower than that, you know, what does that look like for each one of our levels? Is that going to mean, you know, we're back to normal at our high school? Is that going to be, we're back to normal at our middle school? Is, you know, do we have other obstacles that are in there, and, so that we can, people can understand what the balance of the year is going to look like? I think the sooner we can do that, the better.
So a couple of thoughts, as we're talking through this. I don't, I don't perceive there is a, as Susan was saying, you know, a light switch, right? I think, I think there's something you ease into. And protocols change over time. And we're not going to have, in my opinion, clear guidance, even just reading what it's, what the update's at, right? But I think there are opportunities to continue to adjust our plan. And I think it's important that we have, we have a, the ability to articulate what those are, what those adjustments are as we, over time, as we see numbers adapt. Because I, what I don't want to do is set a false expectation that, you know, as, as, you know, Susan alluded to, it's a light switch, we go. Because that's, I don't think that's going to be the case. I think what we're going to see is gradual adjustments, again, and adapt, and adapting. And each, each school is going to be different, each level's going to be different, as you're saying, Chris. You know, and it'll be important that we rely on our building teams to help us work through that, which I know we do. But, you know, I guess my point is, I'm trying to set the expectation that is, it will be a series of gradual adjustments. But it'd be great to talk more about that, and know more about that. I think it's, I think the public would really like to know what those look like, and what the options or choices might be. Thanks.
Yeah, and we're, we're already making, beginning to make some of those gradual adjustments with, you know, the, the students that have identified as need to be in school, coming back four days a week, and then the, the seniors of both of our high schools, and then as, you know, kind of scale it down by class. So that's all continuous, continuation of the process. You know, I, there's still three-plus months of school yet, so there's still opportunity to have an impact. You know, whether, you know, what's not, like you said, it's not going to work, flip a switch, and here we go. But to have a plan laid out, and, and, you know, help us understand what the roadblocks are, you know, if there's roadblocks, you know, is it the lunch period? What are, what are we doing to accommodate that? That's still one of the major restrictions, I understand, just because of numbers, people you can have in a space. But I think it would be important for, for the March 10th agenda to come back with a little bit more specific, and, and, you know, I know the plan's in development, but give us an idea, because we don't have another meeting until, we don't have a second committee of the whole in March, and then we're, you know, the second week of April. So if you could come back to the board in March with, you know, if we get to that point, what would it look like? And what would be the benefit to kids? And, you know, kind of going back to our original principles, you know, you know, at the beginning of this process, we want to be safe, we want to be sustainable, and it needs to be equitable for all kids. So I think that's what, you know, I'd love to see, and it sounds like that's what the board would love to see in Mar, in the March 10th meeting. So it's cautiously optimistic that the community transmission numbers are heading in the right direction. Let's, let's be prepared, and have a plan in place, should, should we get to that gate, so to speak.
Certainly. I think kind of mission expectation understood, we'll work on it. And, you know, again, I want to just be really clear, every school district in our county, every school district in Illinois is on some form of this journey, right? They are all working through iterations to their plan. Frankly, many school districts are working on iterations that are catching up to portions of, of, of our plan. But, but every, every school district is on the, the iteration. So I think what you're asking for, obviously, understandable, there was a, a pretty significant shift, from my view, in guidance. It's opened up a path that didn't exist before. And, and so I think, think fair to understand potentially what that looks like. And, and again, I, you know, I just want to be, be really clear that, that I think what I hear from the board is, a, a plan helps us understand what we can do when we arrive at that point. It doesn't necessarily mean we're bringing something on March 10th that starts on March of the 11th, right? It, we're, we're bringing to you, I think, an outline of what things could look like, consistent with the framework that's been established.
Yeah, and to, to what we just talked about with the learning acceleration plan, anything we can do this year will only help next year and be better. So even if it's, you know, I mentioned three-plus months, even if it's only six weeks, it's got to get incrementally better for, for next year. It's only going to help. So... Good, good conversation. Any other thoughts, comments, before we go to our equity plan? All right. Topic number two.
Right. So the Board of Education, set for this year, one of, one of your major areas of focus or, or priority are, are equity plan within the district. And so we're pleased tonight to bring you an update to a presentation that took place a little bit earlier this year, as the, the board is where you assign this year, a board committee, an equity committee, subcommittee of the board, that has continued to oversee the work. And so really, there's kind of like two intersections that we'll bring together. And then I'm going to enter, let Dr. Poirot pick up the, the presentation tonight. You established a work plan at the beginning of the year. Part of that work plan was also the establishment of a task force that has been hard at work, kind of taking a, a research, literature-based approach and analysis. And so tonight, kind of those two pieces come together as the, the work continues moving forward. So really excited to bring you this update tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Poirot and our team.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, presenting to you an update with respect to our equity plan. So we're going to begin with a definition of what equity is. And equity is a commitment to giving every student what they need to participate in the opportunities of education. It requires removing barriers that prevent students, I'm sorry, removing barriers that limit the success of all students. In order for us to engage in equity, we have to adopt equitable practices. And that means that we are going to give some students more than others, and we need to be okay with that. So today, we're going to provide an overview of the equity task force, some of the work that was done around the equity mission, and the equity practice roles. We're going to specifically share with you what those practice roles were that came out of the task force. And we're also going to provide you with some updates on the work plan. We're going to do a crosswalk with the equity task force, recommendations, and our work plan. We're going to share with you our equity framework that we're going to use to continue our advancing equity work within the district, and provide some updates on some of our projects. The Equity Task Force was formed in August, and we have administrators, teachers, parents, community members, we have a board member on this task force. And one of the things that they worked on was outlining equity practice roles for our stakeholders. And we've also been working to provide the Board of Education with some recommendations to advance equity. Now, I've mentioned the word equity practice a couple of times. This is something that our Equity Task Force really worked at defining. And when I mention equity tracks, task, I'm sorry, equity practice, I'm talking about identifying and discontinuing inequities. So with respect to our mission for equity, it is to eliminate persistent racial and other demographic disparities in achievement. And we want to do this while improving all academic outcomes for students. We want to engage in this work by making sure that we are engaging in equity practice. And there are certain, certain things that we need to do to engage in equity practice. And this is going to require that we examine our individual and organizational beliefs. We're going to have to identify barriers. We're going to change and discontinue practices that are inequitable. We have to work to become anti-racist. And we need to view our work through a lens of equity. And we need to ask ourselves, do the practices advance equity, or are they furthering inequities? I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Salagi.
Thank you, Dr. Poirot. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. So Dr. Poirot touched on the development of our Equity Task Force. And a big part of our task force's work, that's been meeting since August, is identifying the key stakeholders in, in our district, in our community, and really talking through and identifying what is their role in equity practice. And again, just to take you back to equity practice, if you go down to the bottom there, it's identifying and discontinuing inequities. So what are the roles of our various District 200 stakeholders? And we're going to start with the board members. And these are recommendations from the Equity Task Force. So collaboratively putting together recommendations, first really is to eliminate the use of deficit prospective language when discussing racial disparities and referring to students of color. And committing to advancing equity in action. You see that, you see the policy piece that are obviously at the board level, supporting policies and programming that are going to advance equity. But continuing to learn about systems, and to work to disrupt systems that would disadvantage our traditionally marginalized groups, right? And you'll see at the bottom of all of our recommendations around what the task force is recommending around practice roles, is to listen, learn, and grow to be an anti-racist. So there may be words, as we go through this, that some of the experts on the task force may have suggested, that we may be saying, oh, I need to learn more about that. I think with all of these pieces, from every lens that we look at it, we I think with all of these pieces, from every lens that we look at it, we all have to, also have to say, we're always trying to get better in this area and learn more in these areas. Again, five different stakeholders we're going to take you through. We started with, with our board members. When we think about the recommendations from the task force around equity practice for our administrators, a lot of their work is focused on developing leadership capacity and professional knowledge around the topic of equity, right? So the first part of their work is really to develop leadership at the building level, right, and to cultivate that leadership. All of our schools actually have a building equity team, and their focus right now is growing knowledge, changing hearts and minds in their buildings and using that leadership, and that starts with the third bullet point, which is creating safe and brave spaces for students, teachers, and staff to engage, really in discourse and dialogue, right, in this area. With discourse and dialogue comes new understanding and openness. So a lot of the administrator role, especially at the building level, is to cultivate that leadership, but also have a culture that's open enough for people to really be comfortable with being uncomfortable. In addition to that, though, there's an accountability factor, right, to measures for really progress on a lot of our goals that surround equity. And lastly, you see that final bullet point, to listen, learn, and grow to be an anti-racist. Recommendations from the Equity Task Force when it comes to our teachers starts with that open and willingness to really learn, to learn from the experiences and perspectives of their students and parents, but really when we take it down to the classroom level, this is about learning about the barriers that our students face so we can overcome those barriers and connect with them, right? So the teacher level, really the first focus is on how do we learn about what our students are going through and what they face so we can connect with them, and then to do that, we've got to be comfortable with reflecting on areas of equity, race, racism, anti-racism, and a lot of that reflection is going to come through some of the professional learning that's happening in our buildings and through the collaborative leadership structures we have. We know our students play an extremely important role in this as well, and you'll see the recommendations from the task force here really focus around student advocacy, right? How do they advocate for others, challenge systems? How do they take an active role in the community and really participate and become a good global citizen and collaborate and support others in challenging racism inequitable practices? And lastly, our parents and community members. Again, recommendations from the Equity Task Force, you'll see themes that are very common throughout here to support anti-racism and advocate for anti-racism, engage in conversations with individuals, family members, and community members regarding these topics, and really embrace diverse perspectives, backgrounds, and interests. So again, a lot of the similar themes, but at different levels around here that you'll see, and again, a big part of our task force was really starting with who are our stakeholders and what is our collective role in our equity practice, which again is identifying and discontinuing inequities. Now, I bring you to that where the task force has really started in August and started their work in August, but I take us back to the summer when our senior leadership team presented our District 200 Equity Work Plan. Our initial work plan focuses on these key areas that you'll see here, professional learning, restorative practices, curriculum and programming, social-emotional learning, diverse hiring practices, family and community engagement. Safe to say that all aspects of that equity plan were presented and are at different stages of being enacted. We're going to touch on many of those today, and while we touch and talk about many of those today, other areas of that work plan are in action as well. With that being said, though, we have an equity work plan, but we're also learning and progressing, and Dr. Poirot is going to talk you through an equity framework and how the task force outcomes actually intersect with the framework and our District 200 work plan.
So at this point, I want to direct you to this document, which is titled Equity Work Plan and Equity Task Force Crosswalk. So as was just mentioned, we had the Equity Work Plan in place, and when we began meeting with the Equity Task Force, we began having conversations about the different equity roles, and then after those conversations, we began talking about what are some recommendations and requirements that we want to see from our school district. And so with this document, what you'll see is our work plan is, it's a crosswalk with our work plan and some of the recommendations and requirements that were made by our Equity Task Force, and I will say that the manner in which this is organized is using an equity framework that was developed by the DuPage Regional Office of Education's Equity and Excellence Network, and I'm going to talk about that framework in more detail in a, in the next slide, but for now, what I really want to focus your attention on is what some of those similarities are between the two documents and the area of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development. Our Equity Task Force had recommendations where they were asking, or asking for, focused Equity Work Plan, training on implicit bias. Well, these are things that are already happening through our work plan. We have learning that's happening around implicit bias, trauma-informed practices, and so these are some of the two areas that mirror each other, but I also want to point to the next area that's categorized under Student Voice, Culture, and Climate. The task force is really talking about establishing connections with students, understanding identity, the reality of who students are. We had pieces in place in our work plan that directly addressed this through restorative practices and social-emotional learning. The other piece that the task force spoke of was gathering feedback from parents and acting on that data, and this is one of the areas that we have in our work plan, which is specifically engaging the community around this dialogue and analyzing practices in order to make recommendations for improvement. The task force also talked about the need for having diverse, diverse staff in our school district, and we also have a commitment to the diverse hiring within the work plan. So the reason that I'm bringing this up is because I want you to see the parallels in the work that was introduced in the work plan and also in the conversations that are taking place within Equity Task Force. So the next thing that I want to talk about is the equity framework, and as I mentioned, the framework comes from the DuPage Regional Office of Education. They have a group that's called the Equity and Excellence Network, and they have been working on this framework over, I believe, two years, and the reason that we are adopting this framework is because when we're looking at doing work, equity work, the, the work is connected, and we need to examine our educational institution along these different areas, and so you'll see one of the first areas listed is curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development. And in that area, you know, we're looking to the curriculum to see, does our curriculum promote multiple stories? You know, assessment, are we engaging in practices that empower students? Does our instruction facilitate learning for all? And are we offering our teachers, our staff, professional development on equity? The next strand, Student Voice, Culture, and Climate, that looks at elevating our student voice, taking into account what students are saying, what students are feeling, and also making sure that our schools and our classrooms are welcoming environments for our students and making sure that we are engaging in restorative discipline. The next strand, Systemic Equity, that looks at our policies and practices. We need to examine these policies and practices so that we are actively disrupting any opportunity gaps that exist. The next strand, Employment and Retention. What are our hiring practices? What are we doing to incentivize our students of color to pursue careers in education? Are we creating welcoming environments within our school where staff of color feel welcomed and accepted? And the last strand is Family and Community Engagement, and so that's working with partners to educate our communities on equity, why it's important, engaging our families in these same conversations, but at the same time, looking at these areas and thinking, are there any barriers with respect to family engagement? Are there any barriers that exist that prevent certain families from engaging with us and participating in our schools? And if they are, we need to identify those and create systems to disrupt that. And so this is what the equity framework looks at. It's, the reason you see the image as a cycle is because the work builds on each other. It's not work that's done in silos, and it's work that will require multi-year commitments, and it requires ongoing learning.
As we go through the remainder of the presentation, we're going to give you some specific updates on the Equity Work Plan, and we're going to start with professional learning, and I think this is a really important place for us to start, because anytime as you work to build quality, positive change in the change process, you start with learning. And our professional learning plan around equity, I believe, is, is very robust. In your packets, we've given you a little outline of what our actual administrative and building-based equity learning plan is. As a reminder, again, all of our schools have school-based equity teams. Those teams attended a training with Dr. Tyrone Howard on equity and implicit bias in November. Also, leading up to that training, we had spent the greater part of last school year and time this school year prior to that training with our administrative leadership teams on these topics. As we've moved past that Dr. Howard training, the whole theory behind that has been a train-the-trainer model all around building capacity. If we go back to the, the role of the administrator from the recommendations from the task force, it's around cultivating and building leadership and then spreading that leadership within your building. So now, our work is aimed at, how do we do that at the building level? Well, this winter and spring, we've been spending the majority of our leadership meetings with our leadership teams, taking on each of these topics, and Dr. Poirot has led the majority of them with her expertise, but she's pulling from research, we're allowing, reporting some of our building leaders to break out Dr. Howard's training and even dive deeper into it. Our administrators then are taking those trainings and they're working with their building-based teams to then carry that training out at their building on each of these topics. If you look at the Equity Learning Plan on the far right, you'll see success indicators. These are indicators that we expect all of our staff to have an understanding of by the end of the school year. You'll see specific dates with steps and timelines on there, so we're starting with learning, because we built that, that is where we'll have a baseline of understanding the capacity to even grow our knowledge and have an impact on practice for our students. I did want to highlight also a resource that I believe will support and has supported these professional learning opportunities, and this was actually developed by Dr. Poirot and members of our principal team and other members of Mrs. But we actually have an equity resource site that's been developed that supports all of the components that you'll see within our learning plan. So if you scroll down here, what you'll see is icons that support the topics that I just spoke about, and then if you scroll down further, these are supporting resources, videos, articles, different things that our equity teams at the building level can use to support dialogue, to bring teams along, different pieces. So again, just, I think, a representation of, as we build capacity, you see learning and practice spreading. Thank you. Now I'm going to pass it on over to Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Salagi. So with regards to our Equity Work Plan, we had two big goals for work this year in that space that Dr. Poirot identified as curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional learning, and those were to expand our collection of diverse texts and professional learning and implementation of Spanish-language arts standards for bilingual learners. I actually do want to note that these two goals are multi-year, and so we have had progress in both. These, both of these areas on the work plan have, we have had significant work that has taken place by teams across the district on both of these areas, and so the board is going to be provided with just a brief overview to both this evening. So first, in that area that we're calling expanding the collection of diverse texts, you may remember, we've talked about this concept multiple times, it's that idea of the mirrors and the windows. So students should be able to see themselves in their curriculum or the texts that they read, and also we should use literature as an opportunity for, as a window where they can learn about others. And so at the elementary level, each library has expanded their collection of diverse texts this year, utilizing Title III funds. At the secondary level, there has been a strong commitment to expanding the collection of texts used, and we call that in English courses at our high school level, language arts courses at the middle school, to have characters that reflect the diversity of our students. So at our next meeting on March 10th, we will be coming back to the board with a longer report with regards to what has taken place, and also a list of novels to put on public display for you to review. So more to come on this area. The second item is the Spanish-language arts standards, and last year, we spent several meetings talking about how ISB does have this requirement that bilingual programs include the Spanish-language arts standards. And last year, we had a task force that looked at programming models, and we did determine that we would utilize two programming models. One is what, is what we have been doing in the past, is that transitional bilingual education, but second is foreign language at the elementary schools. And so we decided that Johnson and Pleasant Hill would be the buildings where that foreign language at the elementary school model would make the most sense, because there are two schools with the largest population of Spanish bilingual students and bilingual programming. And so Dr. Poirot's been working with a team this year, all year, on developing curriculum in that area, and so we are going to be bringing back to the board in April, at your April 14th meeting, a longer report with regards to the work that has been done in this area and specific curricular documents. But this is an important piece to our equity plan in many regards, and we've really outlined them right there that I think are worth really walking through. First of all, Spanish-language arts relates to equity because it promotes bilingualism and then plays, and places value on the important skills that our English learners possess. It allows our English learners to be viewed from an assets-based approach and reinforces their language and their culture. It helps promote a welcoming and inclusive culture in the school and through learning a new language, and it builds background knowledge and uses strengths of our English learners to enrich their learning. And so once again, we'll bring you more information about this at the April 14th So at this point, we are happy to take questions.
I just have one, one question. I mean, there's a lot to unpack in here and a lot of work that's ahead of us. I truly understand that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't this the year that we also with, in terms of curriculum and some of our texts, were incorporating LGBTQ students? And I guess I'm not seeing that anywhere in this plan, and should that have a role in this, you know, as well? I do, you know, I look at the recommendation here of make deep connections with students, understanding, accepting their identity and the reality of who they are, and I just feel like there should be some representation within this plan for, for that population.
Sure, and, and we can bring in, we plan to bring an update to the board. We have been doing work in that area in terms of developing curriculum specifically for A-. eighth grade, and so when that work was really finalized, we were going to bring that to the board for an update as well.
Thank you.
Dave, you've been on the task force.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I do have some comments. You know, first, I'm really proud of our district. I think, you know, this isn't work that just started with all the events of last summer and, you know, all the public perception and, you know, a lot of this focus on this topic has really grown in the last year, but this work's been going on for a couple of years. Dr. Kroom, who facilitated our first few sessions of the Equity Task Force, had been working with Mr. Biskin, principal at Wheaton North, for a couple of years. So I think, again, we're, you know, doing great work ahead of the game and not just to keep up with, you know, what's going on in society. You know, what Chris just said is something that I'm kind of continuing to challenge myself on. I got more interested in this because of some of the things I saw last summer, you know, with George Floyd, some of those things, and conversations I was having with people, and mostly black people. And I know, I can't speak for anybody else, but a lot of times on this topic, that's where I go. And it's obviously much more than that. It's, and I couldn't have been reminded more, a couple Fridays ago, I went to pick up my daughter, and we had a two-and-a-half-hour ride home from school, and we were talking about it, and my daughter is Chinese, and so she's, you know, she's Chinese, raised in a white family in a white community. And she asked me, have you ever thought about talking to an Asian adult about what it's like to grow up in a white community? And I was like, just stunned with what she said because I haven't. And I, so, you know, I've been processing that, and that's going to be a conversation I have once I figure that out. But just like the, you know, the sexual identity, I don't think of that immediately with this. And it's other people of color, whether they're Indian or, you know, Latinx and et cetera. And I really got interested in just trying to learn and understand and get the perspective. I mean, I don't think I'm racist, but I know I'm biased. But just trying to understand. And when you see, I was in a Wheaton library, one of their seminars they had, and Ken Mejia Beal, who ran for state senate, he got, he's a black man, he got stopped eight times when he was canvassing for running for state senate. I'm pretty sure if I was knocking on doors running for office, that number would be zero. So that just tells you we have a lot of work to do as a society. But I was thinking, you know, initially, well, what can I really do? I just want to learn, what can I do better as a school board member, as a human being? And a lot of I thought was teachers, you know, maybe working on programs to get teachers, you know, kids interested in teaching that are minorities. But I've learned a lot, and I do think there's a lot of things we can do at the board level on policies, on language. It's subtle, but I think what Rob spoke to, the change in language on, you know, deficit learning versus, you know, the more positive terminology, the textbooks. So there is a lot happening, and it's happening pretty fast for how things typically go. So I've just, I think it's really good. I think we have a long way to go, but it's, you know, pretty exciting to me that we're leading the charge in this area.
Thank you, Dave, for those comments. And your participation in the committee and the task force representing the board, I think that's been very, I know, very valuable for all of us, and so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Jenna?
Yeah. These are all lofty goals and wonderful things to be thinking about and starting a dialogue about within the district and within the community. And I still come back down to, okay, so how do we do something concrete with this? What does it really look like? And so I know, just looking at our Equity Mission Statement, the first thing that comes to mind is implicit bias training. And I know we had a program about that this school year as well, but other than that, if we're going to make adjustments to the language we use and our practices, I'm kind of wondering, how are these adjustments passed along? Is this an ongoing dialogue at each building level? I also wondered, I think we've asked the question before, and I don't remember the answer, whether any of our micro credentials offered to our staff members address any of these topics, or have we added to whatever the options might be? And I have to say, underlying that, I can't even imagine when any of our staff members this year have had a moment to breathe and considered taking a micro credential. So good for them if they are, but I'd like to know that they're available. So I'm kind of wondering if we've changed or added to that piece of professional development opportunities.
The answer is yes, yeah. We do have micro credential stacks on the topic of equity and spanning into different individual micro credentials that focus on different aspects of equity. So absolutely yes. So, and truthfully, that could have been included as part of our professional learning slide, but when we look at the professional learning slide, those are things that our goal is to guarantee as the floor when we think about the professional learning side of it.
Susan?
First, thank you for all the work put into this, and I think it's very exciting to see this in our school district, in our particular school district. I think it's work that has been needed for a long time, and I think it's great that we're really trying to tackle this. And I think I just personally participated in a book club the other night on a race-related book, and one of the things that came up is that, on this topic, I think we all have to realize that this type of equity work is based on people always wanting to continually learn and to continually understand something that maybe you thought you did, but then as you start talking to people and listening to people, you realize, I maybe really don't understand this perspective. And taking a step back and realizing that doesn't make me a bad person, it just means I have more to learn. And that's never, that's never a bad thing, to have more to learn. That's why, that's what we do in school, and that's what we hope to foster in our students and in our own children, is that lifelong learner, and that you're always continuing to, wanting to better yourself and to learn more. And I think the idea of you have to be okay with being uncomfortable and realizing, again, that it doesn't mean you're a bad person. It just means you have something to learn. And I think anytime you, I don't care if it's a new sport, I taught myself recently how to crochet, and it was awful the first time, and it was very uncomfortable. And I think so, anything you learn, whether it's something simple like that, it gives you the ability to learn and be uncomfortable in more heavier, you know, types of topics like this that are important and can sometimes feel like it's, you're being attacked or your morals are being questioned. And it's not necessarily that. I think it's just identifying and realizing, I have more to learn, and I'm going to be open to learning that. I'm going to be open to receiving feedback from different perspectives. And so I just think this work is really important in that regard. On that note, I am going to ask a question here. In one of the bullets, it says, "To eliminate the use of deficit perspective language when discussing racial disparities or referring to students of color." Could you please define what deficit perspective language is?
Yeah, and that was a conversation that came out of the Equity Task Force, and one of the things that they would like to see is just using language that doesn't highlight a student's deficiencies or their deficits. And so an example of that is when we use the word achievement gap, because we're assuming that the reason the student is failing is because of their lack of just failure to, you know, not try or whatever, but it's not looking at, well, did the student have access to all of the opportunities to learn the material? Using the word minority to refer to black and Latino students or people, the reality of it is, is when you use the word minority, you're saying that that group is less than, you're referring to the amount of power the individual has. Another word that you've noticed that we began to use is multilingual learners. Instead of saying English learners, let's talk about our students as multilingual learners. Let's refer to them or maybe emergent bilinguals. Why? Because if we say English learners, we're really highlighting the fact that they don't know English. Let's embrace the fact that they're multilingual, that they speak another language, which are valuable assets. And so that's really what that eliminating deficit perspective language really is getting at, is just viewing students for the positive things and using language that really promotes that. Because as was mentioned earlier, language is extremely powerful. And so we want to be able to motivate students through the language that we use, our students, our families, and our community members.
Thank you very much. And then the other thing I wanted to, and I apologize if you saw me on my computer over here, I was looking up a chart that I wanted to reference, and I apologize, I didn't do it earlier. But I just think it's important to mention to our community, and what I was looking for actually came up a couple of years ago, I actually found an email from Dr. Slaggy that when I had asked him a question about, I think, about our demographics in our district. And I found the chart, and I just checked too, that it's pretty, that it shows a chart from 2001, this one goes to 2016, that I quickly looked up, you know, the last four or five years, and it's still pretty on target. That, to mention that our demographics in our district have changed over the past 20 years by quite a bit. And, you know, in 2001, we had 85% of our students were white, and now we're around 65%. And our African-American students has stayed relatively flat, it's in the 5% to 7% range. But our Latinx community has gone from 6% in 2001 to around 17% now. And our percentage of low-income students has gone from 9% to around 27%. And so we've seen a lot of change in our district over the past 20 years, which I think is good, that we have more diversity in our district, but that also means we have to address, we have to address that, and we have to change with that and evolve with that. And again, just punctuates the need for this work, you know, now, and to move forward with it, and to Jenna's point, you know, in a real concrete way, where that we can see. And again, I'll go back to creating that space for student voice in, as we move forward and keeping that dialogue open. And I know when I ran a couple of years ago and was meeting with the principals, and I had long conversations with both the high school principals about this, that work was starting and that there were groups, student groups where they were getting this information from and trying to implement feedback from those student groups. And I, you know, I would hope that that's something that continues, you know, at all levels of our buildings, that's a continuing dialogue. And I think that's what helps bring that sense of comfortable being uncomfortable, that the more you have those conversations and you can ask somebody about their background or their faith or, you know, whatever it is, and you find out that you have, that there's something similar that maybe you share or that you didn't realize that you had. And so I just think keeping those student groups and student voices going to really create that space for students to learn how to have those dialogues and how to have sometimes those uncomfortable conversations in a constructive way. So again, thank you for all this work. I think it's so important, and I'm really happy to see us moving forward with it. So thank you.
Just a quick comment. There are a couple of recent graduates, college students, that are on the Equity Task Force.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think I remember that.
It's not exactly student voice, but I think it is.
Thank you.
Just to say that I appreciate Susan's comments, nothing else. I appreciate something, I'm just saying I have nothing else to say.
Okay, so, you know, I'll pause here first, I haven't even started, but I'm going to say I'm going to pause. You know, this is one of these subjects that I'm uncomfortable speaking to, part because I'm so nervous about what I say and saying the wrong words, so I just, or using the wrong language, you know. I think, I think this is probably one of the most important things our school district is going to tackle over the, it's not even the next year, this is like five, five-plus years. And so, you know, I think, as I think about this as a multi-year initiative, I think about, I always go to kind of my work world and how do we measure success? And I don't know if success is the right word, because I don't know that we can ever get to the point where we can say we've been successful. So I think about how do we measure progress? And so that's something that I would like to make sure we keep an eye on, and what does progress look like? Because we're going to be, we, this board, this district is going to be talking about this for a long time. And I actually looked at the student characteristics that Susan was mentioning, and I still think we have this perception still of, even though we cover multiple communities, we're still perceived as the Wheaton School District. And I think there's an inherent perception in that, but our school district is, you know, the new number, 63% white. And that's not, like you said, where we were 20 years ago. And so this is one of the most important things we're going to be doing as a district on top of all the other important things. So I'm really focused on, you know, making sure the board keeps going with this and providing the opportunities for our professionals to make progress and make sure we have a way to measure progress. And I think one of the most important things we can do as a board, and this is some of the stuff I was trying to get into last fall when we were still doing the reopening plans, but I think the board needs to go back and look at our belief statements. I don't believe there's anything in our belief statements about race or equity. And so I think in future meetings, whether it's March or April or this summer, I really think it's important that we relook at those statements and have something that reflects what's in our, you know, our Equity and Proactive Practices Work Plan, and kind of narrow that down and have a dedicated statement to this topic, because it's going to be with us for, you know, for a long period of time. And then I go back to, I really love this definition at the very beginning, because I think it's everything we've talked about tonight, and we always get focused on as a school board, is giving every student what they need. And so that's what this whole first topic of the conversation was, the Learning Acceleration Plan. As a board, we have to remember, it's not just about the loudest voices that talk to us, that, you know, email us, that post on social media. We have to sit here and represent all the students in the district and all the needs and all the concerns, and that's what our job is as a board member. So I really like that Equity Statement. So I thought it was a great presentation. It's a great, I won't call it a first start, but it feels like a first start to me, because I think this is the most comprehensive, in-depth presentation that I recall in recent years. I could be wrong there, but it feels like we've kind of reached a great point that, you know, creates that next step ahead for us, that path forward. So I think that's enough. I thank you for all the work that you put into this and all the work that's ahead of us. Okay, any other comments from board members?
Brad, I have just two really quick things that I want to mention here as we round out the meeting. One, an opportunity for an upcoming recognition and celebration. So we've got a long history of success with the speech team at Wheaton Warrenville South, and they, again, won a state championship very recently, not just in individual events, they had a couple of individual events, but as a team, they won the state championship. And so we're planning an upcoming opportunity to do a board recognition, as you've typically done for state champions. And then one other recognition just coming up, and we're trying to figure out the best way to do it, March is historically the board meeting where you've also recognized the National Merit Scholars. And so we do have five National Merit recognition, and we're going to be bringing those to the board. And then the very last thing that I shared with- And then the very last thing that I shared with Mr. Paulson tonight is that we have finally received from the attorney for Polte, the projected student counts out of the new development that's coming down at the Nokia property. And so we're going to work with the Facilities Committee to really look at those projected student yields, especially in light of just school boundaries, and ensure that we've got space without having to make some adjustments. Again, just a reminder, that's a pretty significant development down in that area. And so that paired with the other three developments in Warrenville that are taking place right now. If you drive down Route 59, all of a sudden, as you get, not on Route 59, yeah, Route 59, as you get on the other side of Butterfield Road, there are lots of buildings that did not exist a very short time ago on both sides of the road. So we're looking at those pieces with your Facilities Committee just to make sure that we're okay in terms of boundaries moving forward. We haven't had to talk around that in a while.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Schiller. Last up on our agenda tonight is public comments. Nobody in person. You know, we still are maintaining our policy to let board members, I'm sorry, community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the board, to give them the opportunity to send an email to us. Between the posting of this agenda, which is often, usually on Friday, and then 5:00 today, all board members receive and read these emails, which were asked to be clearly indicated in the subject line that they were intended for acknowledgement at this meeting. These emails will be acknowledged by name and then documented in the board communication log. We did receive one email from the community that was from Stephanie and Michael Rock that was on February 22nd and was addressing the reopening plan. So that being the final agenda item tonight, and there being no further action coming before the board, could I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by, second, Boot? I don't know who moved.
Yeah, it was me. I did.
Moved by Mrs. Boot and second by Mr. Long. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Anybody opposed? All right, we are adjourned.